Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us today at the January 7, 2025, meeting of the Scott County Board of Commissioners. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you very much, and it's wonderful to have a full boardroom and have so much interest in our proceedings today. If you did not sign in when you came in, be sure to do that before you leave, so we have a record of your attendance, or sign in sheets right outside of the room, and you can do that when you leave. The first item on our agenda today is the swearing-in ceremony. A couple of us were re-elected this fall, and so thank you Judge Lennon for being here with us today and for conducting this ceremony with us. So first up is Commissioner Jody Brennan. Thanks. I feel like I should get out of the middle, shouldn't I?
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota and that I will faithfully execute and discharge the duties of the Office of County Commissioner, District 3, in the county of Scott, state of Minnesota.
We got the Bible thing. I know, I know.
You gotta put your left hand for the Bible. There we go. I, Barb Weckman-Brackey.
I, Barb Weckman-Brackey.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And I will faithfully execute and discharge.
And I will faithfully execute and discharge.
The duties of the Office of County Commissioner, District 1.
The duties of the Office of County Commissioner, District 1.
In the county of Scott, state of Minnesota.
In the county of Scott, state of Minnesota.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability and understanding.
And to the best of my ability and understanding. Thank you.
Congratulations.
We're gonna go do pictures. Thank you, I hope you'll join us for the photos.
Oh, sure. I got a smiley smiley so there.
Now that we are officially all in office, we can continue with our agenda. The next item on the agenda, item number three, is reorganization for 2025. 3.1 is nominations for an election of chair for 2025. Are there any nominations for chair?
Madam Chair, I nominate Dave Beer for chair for 2025.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Nominations are now closed. Is there?
I will make a motion to both nominations and nominate Dave Beer for both chairs.
Didn't I just do that?
You nominated. We closed nominations, we didn't have a motion.
Oh, oh, controversy. Second then.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded to close nominations and elect Dave Beer as chair for the 2025 year. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll proceed to the vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And now we have a new chair.
Look at this.
Well, here, I'll give you the little thing. There you go.
You gotta take a picture of passing the gavel.
Passing the gavel? We don't, she, COVID moment.
Maybe not.
All right, we're gonna move on to item number 3.2, nominations for an election of vice chair for 2025.
Mr. Chair, I would nominate Commissioner Alrick for vice chair.
All right, protocol says I have to ask three times, any more nominations? Any nominations? Any nominations? No? All right, so we have a nomination for Commissioner John Alrick as vice chair.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to elect John Alrick as vice chair.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, welcome, official vice chair for 2025. Okay, moving on to item number four, amendments to the agenda. I did not see any, but I just wanna make sure through this pile of paper, I'm not aware of any, so the agenda will stand as posted. Item number five, approve the minutes of December 14th to December 17, 2024. Those minutes were distributed. Are there any changes or additions, deletions on those minutes? Otherwise, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of December 7, 2024.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? Otherwise, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, minutes are approved. The last time I did chair, it was during COVID, so I'm very used to looking for a roll called vote, so I'll have to get, it's kinda nice not to have to do that. Item number six, new employees, we welcomed some new employees, so you know what, you guys get to come up and warm up the microphone for us, so come on up, new employees, make a line, give us a, I mean, you are, you're the outgoing chair, so you always had kind of a little shtick that you kind of put, asked them to give, so.
Certainly, yeah, thank you. Once a month, the chair and vice chair meet with new employees that have joined Scott County in the last days, weeks, and months, and today we were really excited to meet with, I think, nine folks who've joined the county in the last days, weeks, or months. So, thank you for being here, we'd love for you to introduce yourself to the board, tell us what area you're working in, where you came from, and just some interesting fact about yourself, your family, your pets, or your favorite kind of toothpaste, it's up to you.
Okay. I'm Scott Head, I'm the accounting manager. I used to work at Super Value U of I for 30 and a half years. As far as me, I'm a long-suffering Minnesota sports fan, I grew up watching sports, the Vikings with Fran Tarkington since I was little until my dad passed, I really think it was his way of teaching me about how to deal with disappointment.
Too soon.
I'm Jeff Wyman, I work in IT for new employees and old employees being off border, non-border. I live in Robbinsdale, and I like to play the drums for a hobby.
Good morning, my name is Crystal DeGato, I work in community corrections. I used to work at an oral surgery group, I live in Scott County, I was born here too. And interesting fact about me is that I like to binge-watch anything on Netflix, so if you have any recommendations, let me know. Hi, my name is Betty, I work for customer service, before this I was working at the jail. An interesting thing is, I have a three and a four-year-old.
Good morning, Andrea Kunzer, I am working in IT as a solution architect, and I was formerly in the private sector, actually in the construction industry, working in IT, in the IT component. And a fun fact about me is that we love to snowmobile as a family, I hope for some snow.
Hi, my name is Steve Lorenzen, I live in Oconia, so I don't live in Scott County, which I'm certain to miss, but I work in IT, I work as an infrastructure architect downstairs. Interesting thing about me is I like to go to work to get away from my four kids that play hockey, and so it's pleasing to be here. Thanks.
I'm Lisa Hawkins, I work in property taxation as a principal property tax specialist, and I came from Olmsted County, did the same job there for 11 years. My hobby is nature and wildlife photography. I like to get up early, so it just kinda fits. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Natalie Bogdan, I just started a few weeks ago as a school link therapist with Southwest Metro, and prior to this I was doing adolescent day treatment in Carver County, and, let's see, I do not live in Scott County, I live in St. Louis Park, and fun fact, fun, fun-ish fact, well, I was thinking about my favorite toothpaste, which, no, but I like to do hot yoga, especially in the winter.
Hello, I'm Alyssa Miki, I am in the mental health center, I'll be working at reflections, I've been here four days. Before this, I was at Cedar House, the outpatient mental health center in Carver County for 10 years, and I am born and raised in Sand Creek Township.
Wonderful. Thank you all for being here and for joining this team and choosing public service, and I'll turn it back over to the chair.
Yeah, I just, I mean, you are, four days, wily veterans, right, of being the hands and feet of serving the folks of Scott County, as we talked about in our earlier meeting today, we really believe in what we're doing here and being the hands and feet and providing hope and putting that hope into action for the people that we encounter, no matter what department we're in, we want it being, be instruments of hope and putting that hope into action and bring transformation to life, so thank you for choosing public service and not public serve us, you know, ourselves, we wanna be public servants to those out in the, out in the county, so, thank you very much, hand, hand of applause for the new employees. Okay, item number seven, somebody said they wanted to strike this from the agenda today, is that, was that Natalie, was that you? No, it wasn't. This is one of the areas, has always been a favorite of mine on the agenda, and we have some folks in the room, for the folks that can't see on the camera, we have a room full of folks. I'm just gonna read a brief statement, I don't normally do this, but I have a feeling, I didn't see pickleball courts, I didn't see Master Gardner on the agenda, so I think this might be about elections. I've talked to some folks in advance of this, so I just wanna read just a brief statement, and then, if you wanna speak, awesome, we'll come up to the microphone after I read this, and we'll get started. So, item number seven, interested, the recognition of interested citizens, so, good morning again, everyone, welcome to those here in the boardroom, and those that may be watching online, normally we have like tens and tens of viewers, so we're hoping to have more today. Thank you very much for engaging with us here today. I've talked with a few of you ahead of this meeting regarding the elections, and specifically the 54A House race, so I wanna make just a few statements before we begin. These statements have been previously released through our website, social media pages, as well as multiple media outlets, but I think they've been repeated. First off, I think it needs to be stated, we follow every process, protocol, and statute handed down from the state and feds as it relates to our elections, laws, and just all of our different processes that we do. The county is the consolidator of election results that may have been collected both at the county facilities, as well as sites hosted and operated by cities and city staff before they are uploaded to the Secretary of State election site to be reported. It was your county election staff following protocols that found the what, why, and where as it related to the 20 missing ballots collected by the city staff at the city of Shakopee's early voting location at the city hall, all of which belong to precinct 10. There have been calls for the firing and discipline of your county election staff, when in fact, they were the ones that found and investigated the city issue, along with the county attorney's office. It is my understanding that the person most responsible for this issue at the city is no longer employed by the city of Shakopee, but you'd have to follow up with them for more details. That being said, if you think there is something we need to know, please bring that information forward with specificity, and it will be followed up on. It is also important to note that if any of us on the board had questions, and we did, we received answers in all of that information, findings, as well as the responses to media requests, was all freely given and posted again through websites, social media pages, and multiple media outlets, I think Tom Hauser was down here more than, on one occasion. Canvassing, something the public is much more aware of these days, canvassing, right? We all know what canvassing is now, for the most part. I served on both canvassing boards, the original, as well as the meeting convened after the hand recount. According to statute 204(c)33, which I believe is maybe the only statute that I know by heart, which is interesting, according to statute 204(c)33, elections must be canvassed, which means you are signing off on voter abstracts, which are vote totals by precinct, and contain the actual number of ballots that went through the tabulators only. It's a little interesting. So canvassing serves as the, is the trigger for any election contest in the courts, if there are anomalies, as there were here in the 54A House race with the ballots that were likely thrown out, literally in the garbage. What about duplicate votes? Again, as part of the election process, a duplicate voter report is run after every election, and no duplicate voters were found here on this race. One last note, it's also important to know that after every election, we pull a number of precincts that I and others have picked out of a hat on several occasions, these randomly pulled precincts are then subject to a hand count to audit and verify the results again, all part of the elections process. As I mentioned to folks that have reached out to me on this topic, I want to again invite them and anyone else that may be interested to come in, sit down, and discuss this election and its process with the actual folks that were and still are the boots on the ground, your Scott County election staff. I think that would just go a long way in understanding the process, what happened, what didn't happen. Now, as we move into one of my favorite items, as I mentioned, on the agenda, the interested citizen portion, if you'd like to address the board, please come up to the microphone and speak your full name and address for the record, and limit your comments to five minutes or less, and it makes much more of an impact if you avoid restating others' comments. Again, thank you so much for your engagement, so, it is one of my favorite areas, it's great to see a full room. Am I forgetting anything on?
Just that we often don't.
Oh, right, 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 I knew there was something. So, on this particular portion of the agenda, oftentimes, we're, we're in a listening mode, taking notes, staff follow-up, there's oftentimes very little, if any, two-way communication, but we'll see how it goes. So whoever wants to get us started, come on up, come on down, and I should say, the microphone will, it's, depending upon where you're at, it, it will pick you up, so you don't need to go down to it.
I'm gonna give this to someone that can.
Perfect, yep, that will, that will all be part of the written record. Thank you.
All right. All right, I will try not to speak too loudly into the microphone. Good morning, Scott County Board, and all you visitors and guests that have come. I'm Natalie Barnes, my husband and I moved to Scott County about 18 years ago, we live at 15630 Fish Point Road in Prior Lake with our four children. I'm addressing you this morning as a concerned Scott County citizen. Since the election in 2020, I have been a much more engaged and informed voter. Living in the free nation of the United States of America, I have always been proud and considered it my civil duty to cast my vote each election year, believing it counted. In the past four years, it has come to my attention, as to the important role our local government takes in the voting process, that would be you. Unfortunately, the drastic changes both in statute and government process around elections and counting our sacred votes has left citizens such as myself to no longer have confidence in the process or our system. Elections are now not a day, or even a few days, but seasons. Trust in our system within our county has dwindled. We need to have our trust restored. If the problem lies within the process, a third-party post-election audit would help reveal and give a pathway to correct Scott County election processes, benefiting not only our county, but the entire state of Minnesota. I'm not just here because of 20, or was it 21 at one point, missing ballots, although that would be enough considering missing ballots, missing federal ballots can be considered a felony. Are there other issues across the county we're not aware of? Incomplete registrations, other ballots that were compromised are possibly thrown in the trash? We have no idea. How many sitting on this board would have a different perspective if you were being congratulated on a win with 100% of the precincts reporting as a new county commissioner, only to be called at 2:00 a.m. and told another box of ballots were found, and you ended up losing? No disrespect to anyone on this board that was sworn in today, but this happened to Joe Wagner in the early mornings of November 6, 2024, for a Scott County Commissioner seat. I conversed with him recently about his experience and obtained his approval to share this information. I cannot fully speak to the confusion about the 30 duplicate registration histories and reasons and explanations, I was updated that it was down to six, and the county has until Thursday to update, but why didn't Scott County just file for an official extension instead of breaking statute and filing completed information on December 6? Or what about a possible 132 votes that do not have a voter assigned? I, again, do not trust the process, a third-party audit is in order. In Scott County, in Scott County, you have an appointed auditor, a paid position of $180,000 per year. Some like myself would prefer this position to be elected, but that is probably another process issue. Does the auditor report directly to you? From what I understand, you also have an election coordinator, a paid position of $100K per year, who works for the county and does not report directly to you, but will answer questions. Although many great explanations have occurred, and we are thankful for people doing their job, as a small business owner-manager, any mistake by my employees is owned by me. I do not shuffle blame, and I take on accountability of errors in training. In my business industry, there is consistent third-party audits, which highlight process problems that may include needed training modifications or adjustments necessary due to changes in FDA regulations or federal law. Again, a third-party audit would assist in highlighting the process issues here in Scott County. A few federal or state violations in question regarding the Scott County November 5, 2024 election, I'm just going to list them. Federal violation 52 USC 20701, retention and preservation of election records, state law violation 204(c)-41, neglect of duty by election officials, secret lists and improper record management 201.021, 201.022, failure to meet voting history deadlines 201.171. I know of two other counties who are doing audits, Stearns and Sherburne, for two different reasons. Stearns County specifically is doing a full county process audit. I bring these two counties up as examples of counties trying to do what's right by their citizens, and work together with us to restore trust and maintain accountability. As the Scott County Board, you have the capacity and responsibility to represent those who voted to have you represent us today. We as citizens are asking you to ensure our votes are properly counted. You as a board are ultimately responsible to count the votes. Errors have occurred, a third-party audit is in order. I do wanna mention, if we cannot come to an agreement today that a third-party audit that is answerable to the board can occur, then the minimum we can ask for is the auditor to assume control of the process, so we know the board is in control of the process going forward while more steps are decided. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Sharon Sikora, I live at 670 Hahn Drive in Shakopee, and I did not plan to speak today. I am just mulling over all the information that I've consumed since the election, and I actually speak for many voices as president of a Voices Advancing Freedom Club in the Scott County area, and I also am a Republican precinct officer, and I have some of my posse here, and I also was at the last election, the head election judge for Louisville Township. So, that experience makes it unconscionable that there are ballots missing, I mean, I don't even know how that happens. The process is very clear, and it's step by step, so, on that matter alone, I would say we need an audit, and I think we need another election that the voters can trust the outcomes, on multiple outcomes apparently. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Al Krantz, I'm here to represent my daughter, she's working today, she's, she lives in Newmarket. I'm actually in Burnsville, Al Krantz, 10704 Cambridge Court. I'm interested in this, I've been following Scott County politics also, I'm interested in this because this affects the whole state, the outcome, the balance of power in St. Paul. My concern, one of my concerns is over the so-called 30 missing ballots, and I know Representative Altdorf, or Altdorf, I guess it is, has gone over the counts in St. Paul, the Secretary of State's office, and with two data analysts and two lawyers, she's consulted with them. They say there's 30 duplicate votes. Now, as I understand it, 27 of those were due to someone submitting a ballot ahead of time, or voting by mail, or Dropbox, and then voting in person. Okay, now, the county has indicated that there weren't duplicate ballots, but there was this analysis going on. Also, I've understood that 27 of those being split that way, also, there's been a The process is very clear and it's step-by-step, so on that matter alone, I would say we need an audit, and I think we need another election that the voters can trust the outcomes, on multiple outcomes, apparently. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Al Krantz, I'm here to represent my daughter. She's working today. She's, she lives in Newmarket. I'm actually in Burnsville. Al Krantz, 10704 Cambridge Court. I'm interested in this, I've been following Scott County politics also. I'm interested in this because this affects the whole state, the outcome, the balance of power in St. Paul. My concern, one of my concerns is over the so-called thirty missing ballots, and I know Representative Altendorf, or Altendorf, I guess it is, has gone over the counts in St. Paul, the Secretary of State's office, and with two data analysts and two lawyers. She's consulted with them. They say there's thirty duplicate votes. Now, as I understand it, twenty-seven of those were due to someone submitting a ballot ahead of time, or voting by mail, or Dropbox, and then voting in person. Okay, now, the county has indicated that there weren't duplicate ballots, but there was this analysis going on. Also, I've understood that twenty-seven of those being split that way. Also, there's been a statement that they took that analysis too early. Well, if we know, if we're able to distinguish between how many came in on early voting versus in-person, then if you take it early and you take it later, the chances are you're gonna find more of those types of anomalies. So, I think with all that in mind, plus the missing ballots, there's no way we can have confidence in the results of this election. We do need a new election to make sure the votes, the voters are counted, not the people counting the votes. Very big difference there, and I'd like to see the people represented, not the counters.
Thank you. Thank you. Got a full room. Anyone else?
So sorry, Natalie Barnes again. I just wanted to mention that I did pass around a resolution to all of the board members. It is specifically concerning the third-party audit, goes through many wherewithal's and all of that, but it would have taken up all my time, so I just handed it to them, so it's part of the record.
And it will be, it will be part of the record. Thank you. Anybody?
Good morning, and thanks for the opportunity to speak with you this morning. My name is Greg Buck. I am not a resident of Scott County. I live in Washington County, but I'm a retired CPA, and in response to some of the problems that were encountered in 2020, I co-founded an organization called Minnesota Election Integrity Solutions to understand and study elections, and it's a 501(c)(3), so we're an educational organization, and most of the time, we attempt to educate the public on elections and how they're run. So, as a CPA, a lot of my career has been involved in business processes and internal controls, and so, as you all know, when you're hammered, the whole world looks like a nail. So, my focus is usually on those business processes for efficiency and effectiveness, internal controls for security, accuracy, being able to produce, in my world, in my old world, accurate financial statements, and now in my new world, reliable elections. So, with that in mind, I just want to point out that elections are simple, but they're hard. They're simple in concept, but by design, really difficult, very hard, because they're, in my opinion, highly complicated, way overcomplicated, and we all know, whether you're an engineer or a finance person, the more complex a system happens to be, the more subject and prone to error you will find. And so, what I've distributed in bulk is the detail of screenshots of the thirty so-called duplicate votes. These are screenshots of registrations on the SVRS, where in December, the December data set shows that thirty people voted in-person with a P designation or absentee, and absentee with an A designation. A couple were P and P, and a couple were A and A. And there's also another data set that is of January 5, which shows some very different data. It's the same sort of screenshots, but here we find that there have been corrections made. And I think an earlier speaker talked about the county certifying that the elections were over and complete on, I think it was December 6 or December 7. The statutory deadline, I think, was the 17th, so, but here we're finding, even after that process, and I'm not sure what the processes are that take place within the county to, as internal control procedures, to find errors, to find duplicates. I'm not sure what those processes are, but they may not have been entirely effective because we're showing the voter histories with, you know, as of December 29, we're showing that there were people with, showed as voting both in-person and as absentee. Now, by January 5, approximately a week later, all but six of those have been, in quotes, corrected, and this is after the elections were complete. I'm not sure if that's a problem with statutes, but changes continue to be made. The small packet that I gave you is detail of six that remain unfixed, and so, on this sheet with the, this is a summary of those two. Now, I've been careful to show only the first name for each of the voters. I don't think anyone needs to know who they are, and the first name is there only because it's a lot easier to track these back. If you wanted to go back to the detail, it's a lot easier to use a first name than a seven-digit So, you can see by the shading that, you know, in the one column, we have the SVRS as of 12/29, and the voting methods as of 1/5, okay? The ones that are shaded in blue are ones that are still showing, the voter history still shows them as voting twice. Did they vote twice? Don't know, but the records show duplicates. Those have not been fixed. So, between December 29 and January 5, we had most of them corrected. There still are a number six that have not yet been corrected, so. Now, so what's the point of all this? Is there a problem with the election? I don't know that. I know Julie Anderson about this much, and she's always been very transparent, very forthcoming, very helpful to me, answering questions and helping me along. In fact, I took the U.S. Graduate Program in Election Administration, and Julie graciously agreed to be interviewed for one of my classes, so, so I'm not here to say she's not doing a good job, but there, as I said, elections are simple, but they're hard. They're hard to get right, and I can tell you that you are not an anomaly. Problems happen in elections all the time. The difference between you and everybody else this cycle is that this was a close election, and so, and so, you had recounts. When you start pulling on the, the way that these election processes are designed, if you start pulling on a string, pretty soon, I mean, pretty soon you're gonna wind up with a pile of yarn instead of a nice sweater, and that is just the nature of elections when you look at them very, very closely. So, what does this all mean for you as a board? You deal in both a world of fact and appearance. For example, you run, your elections are nonpartisan. Doesn't mean you don't have a First Amendment, doesn't mean you don't belong to a party, doesn't mean you're not active in a party, doesn't mean you don't have a partisan ideology. It just means that you're not advertising that in your elections. So, you have, in fact, maybe a certain set of beliefs and standards that you live by, but those are not, but you have the appearance of not having those because it's a nonpartisan election. So, in fact, you may have many opinions and many beliefs, but in, but in appearance, because it's a nonpartisan election, those are not supposed to matter. Okay? I think here we're dealing with the same sort of a thing. We've got, in fact, I can't tell you if the right person was elected. In any case, it was a close election. I can't tell you if the right guy was selected, but that would be the fact side. On the appearance side, I think there are a number of these things on this sheet, and the corrections that have been made after the certifications and that sort of thing, that there might be an appearance in the community that you might want to deal with, and that might, that might be, that might be suggesting another election. So, those are my thoughts, and I just wanted to share those with you, and so appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. That's good information. I know some of us were talking about those databases. Yeah, I'll also thank you for mentioning Julie the way you did, because I've always found her to be forthright. Any questions I've had, very open, honest. I've seen her sit in front of, stand in front of TV cameras and microphones in her face, and here's, here's what happened.
And she's experienced, and experience is something that in many counties, there's kind of a lack of experience, and that's very helpful.
Keep that down. We don't want other counties knowing about her here. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Yeah, come on up.
Okay. Well, hello. My name is Karen Miller. I live in neighboring Dakota County at 17985 Jacard Path, Lakeville, and I've been an election judge and a concerned citizen, so, and know lots of people in Scott County, so I've been paying attention to what's happening here. Thanks for this opportunity to speak. I've been thinking of speaking, but here I am. Overall, my overall point I want to make to you is, just in the 54A race, there's been far too many anomalies and far too many changes for anyone to trust the results or the process, really. You know, first, on election night, it was a hundred percent of the reports or results were in with a, with a win for Aaron Paul in the hundreds, then it zeroed out and it changed to a loss for him by fourteen votes. Interestingly enough, that happened as well in three to five races, house races throughout the state, all resulting in the Republican losing, and we know how close that balance of power is at the state level. So, it's important for Scott County, but it's also important for the state. So, that's the first concern. Then, twenty lost ballots. Again, how does that happen? And that has to be a violation of serious statute. And then, thirty people supposedly voting twice. Again, how does that happen? And this has come because we've been putting this attention on the recent 54A. I would encourage you to do the same investigation for the entire Scott County. Were there lost ballots in all of Scott County? Were there other instances of people voting twice? And then, I'd say for the state of Minnesota, that needs to be happened, that investigation needs to happen throughout the state as well. And then, we get to the point that, so Scott County has already submitted their official data on December 6, but the numbers keep changing. That is a violation of state statute. There's no allowance for changing of the numbers after the official results are submitted. So, again, there's just too many anomalies and too many changes happening, and we don't know, for example, on election night, when it was first reported that Aaron Paul won by three hundred or so votes, then it zeroed out and then he lost by fourteen, was there bipartisan election judge representation when those changes were made? Any of these changes? What bipartisan presence and accountability has been there? So, I just encourage you to do a new election as well. We can see with the fourteen vote differential and twenty lost ballots, that enough, the lost ballots supersedes the difference between the candidates. That is enough to signify, to justify a new election, and then you add in the thirty people voting twice. We don't know if they voted the same way each time or different, so I encourage you to support a new election and a full independent audit. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else that has new information or new comments? Come on up.
My name is Jay Duggan. I'm a resident in Hennepin County.
We'll still welcome...
I wasn't gonna speak today, but I'm going over to Buena Vista to work. I'm in contracting, if you can't kind of tell.
Welcome, welcome.
My mother-in-law lives down in Lydia off at thirteen, so I spend some weeks more time in Scott County than I do in my home county. I wasn't gonna speak until I heard the other speakers talk. I happen to know Natalie too, which is one reason I felt comfortable coming. I've been following the issue, like a lot of folks have said, elections are important everywhere. Just so happens to be you guys hit the eye of the storm. Twenty missing ballots in a fourteen-vote race. I know, we can't ask you to hold a new election. That's not your job. I really wish that your staff hadn't told you to certify an election until they had these issues cleared out. Wish your county attorney hadn't said it was legal to certify an election until we had these issues. Looking from the outside, Hennepin County's a disaster area. Anyhow, I was trying to describe somebody from out-of-state Minnesota elections. I say, you know when you don't want to hand out candy to the kids on Halloween night and you put the bowl out on the front step with the "Please take one" sign? That's our, I was trying to explain to him, that's our elections in Minnesota. It's almost a completely on-your-honor system, and I bet even Julie would tell you, holy cow, you know, three months of voting and primaries, and they can vote by mail, they can request a ballot by mail, she never sees them in person, no one in staff may ever see them in person, but they're registering online, getting a ballot, returning to them, showing up in person, there might be a remote site at different cities, but it all still, the thing that made me want to speak is listening to Chair Beer, what the staff had given you for explanations, and it's what we get for everything, every time an election goes bad. Oh, we got an explanation, it doesn't matter that we broke a whole bunch of laws, deadlines and state statutes, it's not that serious, it'll work itself out, trust us, and all I can think is, holy cow, you got a $180,000 a year auditor who's handed off the duties to a county-paid staff person, so now she's shielded between you with the county administrator. She doesn't even report to you guys anymore. Your auditor's totally shed those duties, I don't know what she does. The treasurer collects the money and the assessor does the assessing, auditing, I suppose, obviously not elections, so not nobody answers to you, and that was the whole point of having an elected auditor in the first place, and an elected county attorney, is they answer to the public. At least with an appointed auditor, they answer to you, to Barb and John and Dave and Tom and Jody, and now with an elections coordinator, not even under, it doesn't seem to be from the public commenting, that she answers to the auditor. We're seeing public comments back from the county administrator, her explaining some of the difficulties and corrections she's had to make, so she doesn't even answer to you folks anymore. She's a staff employee now. It'd be really nice to know that if she is swamped, she's probably not gonna... It'd be really nice to know that if she is swamped, she's probably not going to admit she's totally swamped. We never, we never hear any of these excuses about how crappy things are before the election. I guess nobody wants to blame people higher up the chain for making the process more difficult for them. But we all know it's a difficult process. And since you guys did hit the trifecta, and there's 20 missing ballots in a 14 vote race, and multiple races were changed in the middle of the night after additional absentee ballots were found, I think a lot of people, I know a lot of us statewide would be, we'd be interested in knowing that somebody was looking through the process to make sure it's found. And the, the one thing that really just shocks me is that we've moved on to, our best guess is 20 ballots went missing and probably accidentally thrown away. Best guess? I'd like to know that there's sheriff's department's detectives trying to find out who did it. Cause until we know who did it, it's not 20 ballots. It's at least 20 ballots. What if it turns out that those ballots went missing from somebody in absentee ballot desk at one of the government centers or Shakopee City Clerk's Office? Do they have the power to take in paper, fill out first time registrations and absentee ballots and envelopes? Could that person have taken all of that and thrown it in the trash? And there's more than 20 ballots missing. There may have been people who walked in and first time registered and all their stuff got thrown away. How would we know? We don't know because we don't know how it happened, who did it. And it's great to pass the buck and say Shakopee screwed up, but they still either report to Julie or to your auditor and they're still responsible. To me, that's an admission that they had a process failure, that they handed off a good chunk of the election to Shakopee and trusted that they were doing a good job and didn't do any checkups till then. Stuff hit the fan. That's kind of unacceptable. We're just trusting Elko, Newmarket, Shakopee, Jordan Bell Plain, everybody without checking in anywhere until the end. We're going to just make sure everything turns out right. Maybe Julie needs more help. Maybe she needs more staff. Maybe she isn't overpaid. Maybe she needs additional backup checks. I don't know. It's just, I don't, from the explanations we hear coming from the people who are trying to explain inconsistencies and missed deadlines and other, they're giving excuses, not reassurances that they're fixing anything. So it'd be nice if somebody from the county board made sure they actually, get them help to fix it. And then we prefer it be somebody, everybody in Minnesota prefers that somebody answers to you folks. And Julie doesn't answer to you folks. She answers to the county administrator. So I don't know, maybe at least get the auditor back in charge of the whole process and then she answers to you since you appointed her. And an audit would be, I don't know, everybody, everybody would know at least, at least what happened and how it won't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, thank you so much. There's a lot of good comments that, uh, I think we've heard and have talked about with previous folks. And, and also I just want to make that offer again, that I think what probably will happen is there will be some sort of a workshop, some sort of a setting, um, because no one's taking, oh, oh, that's a good answer. We're, we're just going to hide behind, no. Everyone wants the truth. Everyone here wants the truth. We ask those questions. You want the truth, we all want the truth. And a lot of the investigation has given us all of these truths. So we have a lot of these processes in place. Do some processes need to change, maybe at the state level and the federal level? I mean, personally speaking, I would say, yeah, I'm, I'm on the canvassing board. The canvassing board is sign off on the ballots that went through the tabulator when we know. I mean, it gave me headaches. I've been on that bill for like a year and a half and I still haven't gone back on it. But, um, so I signed the canvassing abstract a little bit differently because in my mind, I needed to account for the 20, even though the canvassing statute and process doesn't require it. Our county attorney gave us the legal advice, which is exactly what the statute says. And, and this is just anecdotal, just comments, just because I was on that canvassing board. And then I was called as a witness. And one, you know, cause one of the questions was, hey, were these results completely accurate? And I said, well, based on the abstracts, those numbers tied out, but there's the 20. And so to account for those. And so yes, there's some things need to change. Couple of us had breakfast with one of our senators to talk about changes that need to happen. So there's a lot of things still happening. Uh, a lot of things have been done as well as far as, uh, you know, investigations and whatnot. I don't think there's any opposition to looking into an audit. I don't, I don't think that's, I don't, no one's opposed, no, no, I don't want to pay for it on the county dime. I'd rather have the state pay for it, which is getting all of our taxpayer dollars anyway. Um, but, but yeah, I think there's openness to that. So I think probably there'll be some sort of workshop setting. I don't know what the right setting is going to be, but a couple of you, I said, hey, if you want to come, like let's get together, we'll get you in front of Julie, our elections people. We're not that big, so like we see Julie, like she's on this phone, like, you know, we don't, we know who Julie is. You know, it's not like someone's hiding from, from us, um, because the buck does stop here. So a lot of these things, we, we've all had some of these same questions, um, looking for what type of change makes sense. So I think this has been a good forum for us to hear you and, um, we've heard you in other different ways. So again, thank you for your engagement in this. It's huge. Cause we are in all this thing together. This isn't some big DC swamp thing, like this is, we're all friends and neighbors and we see each other at church and the grocery store and the, you know, maybe even the brewery. Who knows? Um, so we, yeah, we want this right. We all want this right. We all want this right. So there's no opposition to that, so.
Hello again, Sharon Sikora. My main question after all of this testimony is how do we prevent any of this from happening again? And that's why the audit is needed, to understand the processes and where the gaps are so that we can fill those gaps and give everybody confidence again.
Yep. Yep, absolutely. Yep, yep. I mean, I'm clapping too, because who doesn't want that? So a lot of that stuff is, you know, this isn't blaming, this isn't shifting, this is, like, we don't make state law at the county. So that's why we have relationships with our house reps and our state senators and our congressional folks to try to make change. Because there's, there's change we're trying to make all the time. This happens to be election change. So, um, that's why we had breakfast with one of our senators today to talk about some of these things, because I'd like to see some things changed too. So there's not opposition to that. I don't know what the exact next step is, but I think this meeting of getting together with folks and our own staff, I think would be helpful. So stay tuned for that and we'll coordinate with, oh boy, third time's a charm.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I think my ask is a third-party audit.
Yeah, yep. We got that.
Regardless of if the state pays or not, this is a Scott County, uh, concern. It is our votes. My vote is precious. Do I want to stay in a county that's going to take my vote seriously when there are anomalies that are concerning? I am not blaming anyone. I really truly want to work with the county to be the beacon of hope in the state of Minnesota, to show that we will figure out where errors were made, where we can shore up communications with the state so that people, and I will tell you, I was one of the ones that congratulated Aaron Paul with a text. And the next morning, I'm like, oh my gosh, I'm so sorry. So, you know, it is, it is our duty, regardless of if the state's going to pay or not, it is our duty and it is in your wheelhouse as commissioners to actually call for a third-party audit. It is worth it for us as taxpayers to know that our votes, because our votes are how you landed in your seats. And if you're not going to protect our votes, there are probably constituents and citizens that are willing to stand up and actually run for your seat and to make sure that they're counted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I would just like to say a word here, you know, started to take a tone as if you think we're in, in opposition to what's been said here. We certainly are not. A workshop would just be to go over every question that's been raised here and maybe some that haven't been raised here. Get all those on paper, get a discussion going about those, and then figure out the next step. The workshop is not the final, it's just to move towards what's the next step.
And, and just, I'm sorry, then you're on. And a good point colleague brought up is, is in a workshop setting, that's something that would be officially posted or whatever. So it'd be, you know, and obviously we'll communicate with, we all know people in this room. So, but it would be an official, posted, you know, out. And, and those are always, they're always open to the public, our workshops, always. So that's not, wouldn't be something new, but just to make sure. Okay. Thank you for your patience.
No problem. My name is Lisa Jans, I'm in Dakota County, um, Burnsville, bordering on 54. I've been a chair judge, um, for many cycles. And I actually signed an affidavit because of things that I witnessed in the 2020 election. Nothing came of that, but there were irregularities and that became the election denier cycle that was pretty profound here in Minnesota. So when you pull this up to 100,000 feet versus, you know, 100 foot level, which is what we're dealing with here, I think there's some irregularities that you as commissioners may not even be aware of. Back at that point in time, our own Senator Amy Klobuchar signed a letter along with several other senators questioning, um, election integrity. Questioning, this is a quote from that letter, undisclosed vulnerabilities, improbable results that threaten the integrity of our elections. And so when you, you know, talking with different, um, election administrators in Dakota County and Greg Buck mentioning here in Scott County, when you ask those administrators, what metrics, um, do you use to say you've run a both secure and accurate election? The only thing that I've been, uh, told is that it's just about voter turnout. Well, that's not really, um, showing integrity necessarily. And so we've gone through now two election cycles where people are asking questions. And at your level, you are close now to, you know, it's hard when you take it to a federal level, nobody's accountable. You're using the excuse, it's the money. We can't find the money to do the right thing. And I think, you know, the, these are things that we as citizens and as Natalie pointed out, our, our votes are sacred and we're questioning that and we want transparency. This is nonpartisan. It should be for everyone. We shouldn't have been called out as election deniers just for asking questions. And you have an opportunity, I think, here in Scott County to allow for that transparency. And I think it would be something that would set the tone for the entire state. And I hope that you will do the right thing.
Thank you very much. All right, last call, last call and new information, new information.
New information, yeah.
Good morning, thanks again, Greg Buck. Thanks for the second bite of the apple. It just occurred to me, um, a couple of people have been talking about the county, um, auditing the results. Um, I have another proposal that I think might be more impactful statewide, but this body could be instrumental in making this happen. There is a body in state government that could audit elections and has done from time to time audit elections. Um, and that is the legislative auditor. And I'm going to propose that you consider joining with me in requesting that the state auditor look at a couple of internal control problems. There are reconciliations of, there's a three-way reconciliation that needs to happen to make sure that the votes tallied are correct. Right now, we have a two-way reconciliation. Ballots are connected to the reported tallies. The missing leg on that stool is that those, those two numbers, which need to be in agreement and are on the county administrator's summary statement, those need also to be in agreement with each vote and each ballot cast has to be tied to a legitimate, uh, to a legitimate active voter in the voter rolls. And it shouldn't be that hard, but it's a big hole that's wide open. And I would like to have, it'd be great to have you join with me in making this request to the legislative auditor, that they consider the internal controls surrounding the accumulation and reporting of election results.
Thank you. All right. There was some conversation of that this morning, so that's, that's timely. All right, we are going to move on, looking around, to item number eight, our consent agenda. All right, moving on. Consent agenda, these are, what do we have? 14 actions that will pass in one motion. And again, thank you all, I know some are going to leave. Thank you for your engagement, appreciate that. And thank you for, like, I do mean it when I say the recognition of interested citizens is one of my favorite areas. I wish people used it more. So, thank you. No, it's, hey, it's your time. It's, it's good. Thank you for coming. Okay, I'm going to start with item 8.1, approve the 2025 county board meeting schedule. Uh, 8.2, adopt resolution number 2025-03, adopting the 2025 Scott County Board of Commissioners operating rules and guidelines. 8.3, adopt resolution number 2025-04, appointing commissioners and other county officials to boards and committees for 2025. 8.4, adopt resolution number 2025-05, designating the Minnesota Star Tribune as the county's official qualified newspaper for 2025 and authorizing entering into a three-year contract. 8.5, adopt resolution number 2025-06, authorizing the use of the county's website as an alternative method to the official newspaper to solicit bids, requests for information, and requests for proposals for transportation projects. 8.6, adopt resolution number 2025-07, approving the preliminary plat and final plat of Sandhill Metal Plat, Thomas Anderson applicant and Ryan Schimmick property owner. 8.7, adopt resolution number 2025-08, approving a conditional use permit to lease space for rural industrial business. Vitale Terescov applicant and Vital Realty property owner. 8.8, adopt resolution number 2025-09, approving a conditional use permit to operate a tree and landscape contractor yard and lease space to other industrial uses. Hawks Property LLC applicant and Gladys Lindstrom Trust property owner. 8.9, adopt resolution number 2025-10, authorizing entering a contract with Motorola Solutions for radio maintenance. 8.10, adopt resolution number 2025-11, authorizing entering into an updated Vermillion River Watershed joint powers agreement. 8.11, adopt resolution number 2025-12, authorizing Scott County's continued joint participation with Carver County and the Family Homeless Prevention and Assistance Program, FH PAP for 2025, 2027. 8.12, approve the one day to four day temporary on sale liquor license for the Shakopee Lions Club in Jackson Township. 8.13, approve a new application for Scott County wine license for an establishment in Cedar Lake Township for 2025. 8.14, approve payroll processing of personnel actions. Those are the 14 items on the consent agenda. Is there any changes, direction, polls, or is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would just only comment on this one about the, um, the Star Tribune.
Yes.
And that we are, as a board, and I think a lot in the county and probably the whole state, newspapers just don't cover the areas that they used to anymore. And so we've, I think all kicked the tires on this and, um, we need to find a better solution, whether that's internet or something else. But, um, yeah, I would just say that.
Agreed.
But with that, I would make a motion to approve these, uh, 14 items of consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, yes, on that item 8.4. Thank you Commissioner Wolf for bringing that up. And I, I did ask for clarification on circulation numbers before we made that decision because those weren't in the RBA and we did get those. And the Star Tribune circulation and actual subscriptions in the county, um, are significantly more than the New Prague Times. And of course, again, New Prague Times being so close in our county, I wanted to make sure that we were considering those, but I do want to, thank you for your comment. We did, we did get those numbers, um, to make sure that, uh, there wasn't a rationale for doing this differently.
Yes.
What were those numbers again? Do you remember that?
Um, you know, it's over 5,000 a day on the strip. On the, no, 5630 on the strip on Sundays, 3,070 residents in Scott County on every day, weekdays.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All approved or say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right, passes. Um, okay, I'm going to pull a little bit of audible. I know it's a little bold, uh, week one. Or unless there's something significant, can we email our commissioner reports? Was there something you want to?
That motion to adjourn.
Well, we're not quite. We're going to go to 10. We're going to go to 10.
I'm good with that, yep. If anybody else is.
If you're good with that, then we'll move to county 10. Uh, item 10, county administrator update.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing further to report today.
All right. And looking down to our right, county attorney.
Mr. Chair, we do not have a need to meet.
All right. Thank you so much for, for everything and your lack of reports. So it keeps it, keeps things running smoothly. I like that. Um, okay, here we go. Item number 12. Item number 12, motion to adjourn. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?